All right, good evening. I would like to call this information study session of the Board of Education to order. It is Thursday, June 8th at 6:00 PM and ask that the clerk please call the rule.
Dr. Body? Dr. Kavanaugh?
Present.
Ms. Lilge?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Present.
Ms. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Richardson? Dr. Rodriguez? Ms. Williams?
Present.
Ms. Willis?
Present.
Or Ms. Present?
Thank you, and I was made aware that Mr. Richardson would be absent this evening. So that brings us to additions to the agenda, which is, I needed to make sure something was on there. Okay, we're all set there. That brings us to public comment on agenda items, for which we have none. Oh, I forgot my snarky comment at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, Dr. Body, just because there's two Bodies present at the table, you only get one vote. Forgot to say that.
That's it.
Ow, man, I almost missed my window. Okay, so that brings us to presentations this evening. So I will invite Ms. Benavides to give us an update on 98B.
All right, good evening, everyone. It's that time of year again. I feel like this is my duty during the year to, for this presentation. So happy to be here this evening, especially at the close of a year, to really see what we've accomplished and what we've been up to as far as student achievement. So really excited to be here this evening. This again is our end of year assessment review. Just as a reminder, this is part of our obligation to Public Act 48, although I think it's just good practice for everyone to know and be really transparent about how we're doing in student achievement across the district with our local assessments of AIMS Web and NWEA. Just as a reminder, our goal for the Public Act, we do have to set a goal each year, and our goal is to meet 80% of our students will meet growth expectations by the end of the school year. And so we will report out on that this evening. So there's two assessments that we use as a school district. One is AIMS Web Plus, and that is an assessment that we use for kindergarten and first grade. And then we use NWEA MAP Growth for grades 2 through 12. I do want to tell you that this data is hot off the presses. This is something that we got last week. We finished up with assessment, got the raw data, kind of plugged away at it, and put it into this PowerPoint presentation for all of you. And this is kind of just the beginning of our data dig. So that you know, this is really a high-level overview of both grade levels and schools in comparison and over time. So you'll see, this is the first time we're able to actually do spring to spring. So that's kind of exciting to see that comparison data. The other thing that you need to know is this is data that we will actively be sharing with our principals during our retreat next week, and then we'll be digging into the data. So as you see, this is a very high-level view. We'll be looking at things like demographics, special education, grade bands, teacher proficiency, and different things across the district to really find where we need, have some work to do, and where we have some exemplars to really pull from and expound upon for the next school year. Just to remind the Board of the vocabulary and those of you that are watching, we have proficient, which is the level of rigor or standard that we would hope that all of our students would attain. That means that they have met the grade level standards of that particular grade level. That is also something with NWEA that's a correlation with M-Step. So this will give you a good indication, though that data is embargoed currently, that this is a pretty good predictor of where we will be with M-Step as well. Then we have met growth. That means if I have a student in the second grade that comes in, and let's say their RIT score is 10, for example, then that means that any child in the nation that scores a 10, that's the amount of growth that they should make in a year's time. So that met growth metric is one that we're going to talk a little bit about tonight because it's a very important metric, because that means wherever students come in, that they've made that year's growth or expected growth over time. And that's why it's our metric for the Public Act. Then we have some growth. That just means that we have students that have come in and their score is higher in the spring than it is in the fall. And then we have no growth. Do you know, it's obviously exactly like its name. The growth of the student is, has not progressed through the school year. Their score would be the same from fall to spring, or may even slide back in some cases. And then we have comparative data. So that's the one that I'm really excited about tonight because you're going to be able to see what we had from last spring to this spring and the progress that we have made. So there's three sections to our presentation tonight. One is by grade level, so you can see from kindergarten through 12th how we're progressing. Then we'll go through the grade bands in schools, and then at the end, we'll talk a little bit about our instructional plan that we started this year, and we will continue into next year. All right, so jumping right in, we'll start off with our first slide. This is reading proficiency. So just a reminder again, kindergarten and first grade do use a different test than everyone else. So this test is AIMS Web Plus. It's more of a screener. It is not necessarily standards-based, but more on skill-based. So just to be aware of that. In grades 2 through 12, we do use NWEA, which is that nationally norm test that we did talk about. The gray bars in the PowerPoint tonight are all of our historical data. So spring of 21, excuse me, spring of 22. So it's our scores from last year. So you can kind of look across from kindergarten till 12th grade and see how we have done in comparison to last year's spring scores. Just going to give you a minute to kind of rent yourself, look at the graphs, and then we can talk a little bit about it. So generally, you'll notice that the trend is upward. We do have a couple of grades that we have had a 1% to 3% dip in scores from last spring, but overall, we are seeing the proficiency rates really progressing, which is a wonderful thing, because that means that our students are learning right at their targeted grade level. The next slide is math. So again, looking at the same thing, proficiency again, looking from kindergarten to 12th grade. And again, you'll see that the trend really is upward, with the exception of 9th grade and a dip, small dip in 12th grade. So again, really happy to see that those proficiency rates are increasing. Having been a former principal and to all the principals out there and teachers, to see things move even three points, two points in a proficiency is really no small feat. So this is really very exciting data for our team. I know that we kind of geek out on data and looking at all of the numbers, and that's not everyone's cup of tea, but this really, this presentation really shows the commitment and dedication of our teachers, our principals, our instructional division, and everybody really rowing in the same direction. So I'm really, really proud of this data for our district. The next slide you'll see is met growth. So again, this is the norming from other grade, students of the same grade level nationwide. So it's a comparison of, this is about how much growth an average student with this starting score would make and how our students have progressed and if they've made that growth. This doesn't matter if the student comes in on grade level, above grade level, below grade level. It takes them right where they are and then projects that number individually for each and every student. So again, taking a look across the district, we are seeing gains in the area of met growth overall. If we take a look at math, again, looking at the same metric, one of the ones that I think is really interesting is kindergarten to first grade. So we can see that our kindergarteners are coming in, and then we see the big jump from there to the first grade scores. So that's a neat comparison to see. But again, just pleased overall that we have some increase in scores. Where my division will be really taking a look, and of course, principals, are where are the grade levels that we aren't meeting the growth? Where are those happening? Are they anomalies in one classroom, a school, a grade band? What's happening? And so that's where we start to really take in and tackle the work, which will start this week and next week. We've already started looking at this data. So, as I don't have any causation right now to share, but of course, I'll be happy to share our findings as we kind of do a deeper dive with any of you that are interested in that data as well. The next one we look at is just growth. So this is a metric that was used really prior to the time that I started even doing these presentations, and I think it was, a lot of it was because we were looking at, what can we show as far as what our students are doing? This measure, though, really is not a bar that I think, it's though interesting, I think it's a bar that really is not, is not a high bar, right? So this could be a student who went from a 12 to a 13. This does, this means that there's any growth at all. Where we find the interest coming in is the next couple of slides of no growth, because then we really want to dig into those students and find out exactly what their educational experience has been, what interventions have we put in place, are they receiving the accommodations that they need to be successful, are their pockets, what's happening with that? So again, growth are students that have gone from just any type of increase in their assessment scores. We take a look at math growth, and again, the same metric across the district. So students have made, who have made growth. You will notice on several of the slides that grade 7 seems to be a little bit of an outlier on some of these, that those are where our scores are dipping. We did kind of expect this. Our middle years bands have been very difficult to staff this year, as I know that the Board knows. So in that 6th, 7th, and 8th grade band, that's where we had a lot of long-term subs, even rotating day-to-day subs. And I guess in some ways, that just shows really the amazingness of a certified day-to-day teacher, right? That they're really making that impact. And so making sure that we're properly staffed is really important. I did check in with Christina earlier today, looking at some of our staffing. Some of the schools where we had 6 and 7 subs were down to hiring only one-for-one teacher in the fall. So we're making really good gains in those middle years areas, looking for certified staff and securing them early. Then we go into no growth. So this is really where you want to see the bars go down, right? So looking from the gray to the blue, you want to see those decrease, because that means that we have more students that are actually growing. We've talked about this trend before at the 98B presentations, and we noticed, of course, there's an engagement curve, as I call it here, where the older the students get, what does this actually mean for us? How does it help us? You know, and so you will see some, some higher scores in the no-growth area, kind of naturally in those upper grades as well. And then math. The next two slides are the ones I'm most excited about, and these are our overall district-wide scores in reading. So as we take a look, again, the gray bars are from last spring. We had 17.44% proficient, and this year in spring, we have 20.88. So really excited. It looks like a little bump for those of you that are in the audience or even in the Board, you might say, "That's not very much." It's a lot to move proficiency by that type of rate. So it's something that a lot, everyone in the district has really been focused on this year. Teachers have been very diligent, principals and the instructional team. So it's nice to see that those efforts are moving. I often think that when we put into place instructional practices, it's like action research. So we put things into place, and then we need to see if they're working. What this tells me is the things that we are doing are working. We obviously have far to go, but it's really exciting to know that the work we're doing is moving student achievement for our students. If we take a look at the second one, we have met growth. Again, this is the bar that I'm most interested in, because this means that we're moving our students where they are. And then, of course, we have some growth and no growth, all trending in the right directions. We take a look at math. Again, this is our district summary document. You can see again in math for proficiency, 14.96 to 17.41. So again, an increase there. And then in the met growth, looking at almost six points, a little over, for our met growth increase. And then, of course, growth and no growth, which those are metrics we'll be really digging into and seeing, who are those kids? All right. That concludes kind of our grade band over time, from last spring to this spring. Feel free to stop me if you have questions. The next section we're going to go into really talks about each of the schools and how they're progressing from one year to the next. It's a lot of bars, so we tried to color-code the best we could. Again, the bars from last year are all gray. So as you look, for example, at Avril, you can see last year's was 22, this year's is 24.85. So it gives you a good comparison from last year to this. And then from left to right, from our pre-K3s to our high school, and then ending with our district right in the orange. So again, we have some nice jumps in some schools. With proficiency, we have a couple of schools that we're going to need to dig into a little bit, both for exemplars. Like I take a look just, for example, at Willow and Kendon. I know they've had a heavy focus on early literacy in their schools, really implementing structured literacy and being very diligent about that. And I can see that those scores really are showing through their assessment scores here. But there's others that we need to look to see, what other exemplars or things can we share with each other across the district, so we're not doing great practices in isolation, which will be part of our retreat with the administrators next week.
Can I just interrupt?
Please.
Only because she's here. I also just want to give a shout-out to Emily. Forest View went up eight points of proficiency for reading and about six and change in math. So that's a big jump, Emily. Thank you.
Hey, that's great. All right, let's take a look at math proficiency. So again, same exact kind of layout for you, from left to right. And then the next one we'll look at is reading met growth. So again, taking students right where they are when they come to us, looking at the comparative data nationwide, and taking a look at where they sit on these graphs. I think what's amazing is the team that's been built with our principals is it's a fairly tight-knit team, and we've established a great practice of sharing strategies with each other. And I know they even have their own groups that they like to share and meet with each other and push each other's thinking. So we're really excited to get them together next week to really take a look at this and dive in and share their stories this year about what's worked for them and ways that they want to see their school kind of take it to the next level next year. We have math met growth is the next one. I would like to point out for, let me go back here. Just to remind you that our metric for the, for the Public Act, our goal for this year was 80% proficiency for met growth, or 80% metric for met growth. And so really recognizing some of the schools that are coming much closer, even with the reading. And then when we look on the slide that we're on right now for math, we have several schools. Kavanaugh has met that metric for our Public Act. That's awesome. So congratulations to Kavanaugh and all the hard work they've been doing. I know they focus a lot on teacher collaboration, small group for students, and those are practices that we can all employ in our own classrooms. And we also have Lyons, very close, with 77.38%, and Luton, a hair off literally, at 79.59%. So this is exciting. I haven't seen this kind of data, honestly, since I've been in Lansing for a really long time. And I was, my team had a little mini office dance party when they got their data today. They came in, they're like, "This is so exciting." And I can't imagine how our principals must be feeling day in and day out, and our teachers as they are working on this. And just to see this move is really exciting for all of us. Again, we have reading growth. So how many students actually moved from one metric to another? And then we have our math growth. Another little shout-out to Kavanaugh. 100% of their students had some type of growth this year. To have 100%, like a perfect score, that's pretty amazing. So many of our schools, though, in that 95, 94 range, of course, we want to see all of our schools at 100%, but it's nice to be able to celebrate those wins. And then we have our no-growth. This is really where you'll see kind of the impact of those middle years, right? So kind of that spike in the middle, and that is where we know we've had some staffing issues this year, and it really is showing in this way. We're really excited to be having staffing happening early this year. We've had some interns from Michigan State that have committed to Lansing and coming, and it's just nice to know that we'll be set for the fall in a much better way than we were poised to for this school year. And then we have math. For no-growth. And then I wanted to just review our plan. So this plan is the same plan that we showed last year. I think it's important that this plan doesn't change. This plan could be added to, but these are things that we know are working and that we know are really important for the school district. I've been involved in school improvement for a while now, probably, I got my pins this week. I'm at 26 years, so I had five pins. I was all excited about it. But in that 25 years, I've participated in the school improvement team, either as a teacher or a principal, and now at central office. And one of the things that they always say with school improvement is three to five years. Any good thing takes three to five years to really get in place. And so it's really important to us that we keep this slide on here to remind us that these are the things that we're really invested in, and that obviously, through our kind of action research through this year, we know are moving. And then really taking and tweaking and adding and layering in things as they go, so it's not too overwhelming. We know that strengthening tier-one instruction is just critical, right? So that teacher in front of that student, every student is agenda and student first, and so we need to make sure that they have access to core content at the grade level, and then we can make scaffolds and accommodations and whatever we need to do to make sure that every child has access to that. But that, those high expectations have to be there. We have to expect greatness from all of our students when they walk through the door. And so that tier-one is just absolutely critical. And then we also need to make sure that we have a consistent model of instruction. So I know the Board receives our instructional minute. Our instructional division sends it out every week with kind of videos and help, and we have pictures across the district of things that are happening. It's important to have a touch point about instruction and ways that our teachers can even share best practices through that memo, as they'll send in things they're doing in their classrooms, too. So that consistent model is really important. Also, we are now doing our surveys, which thanks to all of you who took the staff survey that are out there in our community and our families and our students, that gives us good feedback to know, do our families feel safe? Do they feel welcome? Do you feel like you have someone at your school to talk to? Those surveys give us really great data. This is fabulous, but we also need other mechanisms to find out how people are feeling about our school district and the ways that we can improve. Also utilizing data regularly, so again, the Board just gets to see a snippet in time of our 98B data. But this is data that's just one piece of kind of the fabric of the data that we look at. So we look at attendance data. Teachers look regularly every day at, are their students understanding the assignment? Not understand the assignment, what needs to be changed or tweaked. And so there's so many different types of data that we use, but of course, we know in Michigan that the metric for us is really the SAT M-Step, and that really means something here, to know that we have our students on grade level. All of the data that we collect helps us to get us there. And then utilizing the results from the Equity Audit, of course, that's on top of mind, right? We had that wonderful presentation that came with some recommendations of things that we can do, and that needs to be something that's just really the fabric of Lansing as we move forward. We have to embrace everyone here. That's really what I'm most proud to be a part of Lansing for. And then, of course, Ben brought the quality review. So we've had some metrics that we're using for principals to really take a close look at their schools with an outside evaluator or walkthrough, and also someone from our department to really identify things that are going really well in school, points of celebration, and then areas that they want to improve, whether it be leadership, teacher collaboration, assessments, and so forth. And so that quality review is just another way to do that. And then, of course, we need to make sure that we're raising awareness around accountability for assessments. So one of the things that can be really great is NWEA, because it is a standardized assessment or a standards-based assessment. If we have students, for example, that are in a, let's say, Algebra I class, and they take the NWEA, we can see which standards they have accomplished and which standards they still need to work on. And so those are ways that we can make these assessments kind of real-life for kids to say, "Oh, wait a minute, you've already passed these five standards. We're good. Let's move on, and let's tackle the ones you haven't." So we've just started kind of looking into some of these things, because these are things that are kind of new discoveries for us as a school district. But I think that's a great way to make those assessments really real for kids and see their progress. And then, of course, just knowing that by taking a test, you actually have to know how to do that, right? And I think sometimes we forget that navigating things is half the battle, right? Knowing like, if you have a multiple-choice test, you can usually knock about two out right off the top, right? And then you're down to that 50/50. And then hopefully, you use some logic and some smarts to figure out the one. But there's strategies, right, that we all know to take tests, and I think it's important that we make sure that our students have access to be able to know how to maneuver themselves through a testing situation like we would have in Lansing and across the state. So thank you for your time tonight. And I'll take questions.
Thank you. I think, I think that's a really good point about pointing out sometimes it's about capacity to pass the test, because some people can know the answer but have such severe test anxiety, or the test doesn't read well enough to them that they can't select the right answer. So that actually leads me to my question. So like math, I can understand their concepts, and either you get the answer right or wrong, right? You have to calculate to the right math answer. What type of content is on the reading test for us, the test if a kid can read? So I'm trying to assess, are these numbers telling us that our kids can't read? Or are numbers telling us that they're having issues with passing or demonstrating proficiency on the test?
Great question. So the skills in kindergarten and grade one, that's the AIMS Web. So that's really like sounds, letters, those kinds of things, the kind of basics of reading. And then when we get into NWEA, it's more reading a passage, answering a question. So it's not necessarily about the ability to read, but the ability to garner the answer from what they're reading. Now, obviously, if you can't access the test, right, because your reading level is not at grade level, then that's going to cause an issue. The nice thing about NWEA, though, is it's adaptive. So if I'm a 4th grader taking the test, and I might not yet be at 4th grade reading proficiency, the test, I will get one wrong, and then I'll get another one wrong, and the test will go, "Oh, this is too hard." And they'll scale down, and they'll go to like a 3rd grade question. And then if I start getting the 3rd grade questions right, they'll scale back up again. And so it's really adaptive to know where our kids are, because like you said, if they can't read the test, we also need to know what they do know. And so that's why NWEA is a really great test for us to be using.
Great, thank you. That really answered my question. Ms. Williams?
So I'm just, I'm, kudos to all the schools for improving, but my heart is on these 13 schools that we have. It's, I'm amazed. I'm, how are we going to celebrate these teachers, these students? I mean, they have done wonderful, and I mean, looking at them, most of them have moved from not even achieving to met goals or proficient. So those 13 schools have done well. So how are we going to exemplify them? And if I can have that leeway to list them, Atwood, Capital Area, K-12 Eastern, I'm a Quaker mom, go Quakers, Everett, Avril, Gardner, Guyer Park, Saxon, Lyons, Mount Hope, North Rio, Wexford. Kudos to the staff, the teachers, and to everybody that's supporting. You guys have done great. What, I mean, this is the group that probably should be leading part of the forefront on what did we do to change to do this thing? And congratulations to you and your team for making this work.
I will say that our principals have taken the lead on some of the celebrating. We've had parties to Hawk Island. We've had some water slide things at the schools, and so a lot of them, they had a Global Guardians, I think it was a breakfast celebration at Gardner. and we'll have to make sure you are next time. So, the schools really are celebrating. Even if overall, you may not see that their scores have increased, it's important to celebrate each and every student's efforts and successes, even if overall the school you might not see is listed as one of the ones that you've listed. And so, I do think that the celebration, we cannot forget to do that. I think those small wins perpetuate people to have a sense of pride and then want to keep on going. Especially when the wins are small, that momentum is really important. So, thank you for lifting that.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Hi, Ms. Benavides, I share your excitement over data, as you know. If my colleagues will excuse me for a moment, I'm going to be a bit pedantic. So, when we're looking at comparisons from one year to the next, and we're looking at proportions, we would need to do a chi-square test to know if those proportions are statistically significantly different. So, that doesn't matter when we're looking at by grade level because any improvement is an improvement. That means at least one child has improved. That's great. But I would like to caution us against particularly criticizing particular schools that, at the school level, seem to have gone down or gone up because for all we know, not having done the inferentials, we don't know if actually there's been no change at all. It's just, it's just the numbers. So, at the grade, and so that's, that's why I appreciate what you said about morale and how all the schools should celebrate because what we're seeing across the district is a lot of improvement at the grade level, which I do think is more meaningful than looking school to school because without that additional information, it's hard for us to make those kind of judgments about which schools are doing like well or poorly. So, just some, some context for y'all. And I would be happy to do the inferentials if you would like to provide me with the raw data. So, the offer is always open.
I would love some help, but you said some words I'm not aware of. I always, in fact, I always say, I'm like, I always, I always love the questions that come from her, have come from you because I always feel like I'm learning something, right? It was like, it was like Dr. Burrows with data. And so, yes, please, that would be great. And I love that you lifted that because we, when we look at the data, these are percentages, and that hides a lot, too, right? So, where we might see large growth, if you have two out of 10, right, so that's two students out of 10, but then you might have 20 out of 100, like you have to really look at how many it could, you could have a score dip, and it could be one, two, three students that, especially at our very small schools. And so, it's really important that, that's why I wanted to start with, this is really high-level data. We really have to look class by class, student by student, to really know what's happening. So, thank you for that.
And I really, Dr. Kavanaugh, thank you for lifting that because my next question is going to be, do we have access to obtain that information? So, I appreciate you offering your, your expertise to assist us in getting the answers you seek. So, we definitely will look forward to seeing that once it's calculated. Dr. Boddy?
Our pleasure.
My question is, one of the things on our super committee evaluation that we got to report was the, the lack of like true differentiation in the district. So, I think that on this slide, there were different.
I would agree. I will tell you that differentiation is one of those kind of next-level skills for teachers, right? So, just like we've talked about looking at a whole class. I used to teach fourth grade, so looking at my whole class, I can look at what I need to do to reach my grade level standard, but what I might need to do for you is very different from you, and it goes day by day. And some teachers already have those differentiated skills and are doing really nice jobs with those, and others, they're, they're filling their toolbox, too. And so, I do know that when Ben has talked, at least with our instructional team, about differentiation, he'll always say like, we're, we're getting there, but like, we do have to take really good baby steps to get that good solid tier-one instruction to know what really is at grade level. And so, I do appreciate that, though, because that is, that is what is going to take us really to the next level for each of our students, so.
Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report. Appreciate it. I'll go back to my old question. So, this is an Ames Web, whatever, test. How many other tests do kids take through the year that are this type testing?
This type of testing?
Yeah. Well, you have, you have this one, you have three or others that, that happen throughout the year, right?
So, it depends on the grade level, and it also depends on the need of the child. So, for example, if I have a child that's taking Ames Web and they are at level, then I don't need to do any more diagnostics because I know they're ready to learn. They have the skills and the foundations ready to go. We have schools that use a test called DRA at times, and it is a test that you go through, and it has, the student will read to the teacher, they'll write down their miscues, and it's a more diagnostic test to see is it a fluency issue, beginning and end sounds, what's happening? So, as far as the ones that are standardized across the school district, it's really the two that you're looking at because, again, we don't want to over-test or test fatigue our students. They get enough, honestly, in the spring. If you look at the spring summary for what we do at the state of Michigan, really from about spring break till the end of the school year, kids are in some form of standardized testing with M-Step. And so, we really try to use at least these type of diagnostic tests only when we need to, to really dive deeper to find out what's happening with our students. Now, regular tests, of course, right, chapter tests, tests after different types of content.
So, so we talked, the previous time, we talked about kids having the, being ready to take a test like this when it was not going to do, it's not the me for the M-Step, whatever, right? So, do we still have that feeling that some students just go through the motions? Or are they more, did you see any change in their attitude about the test and that kind of thing?
So, those will be questions that we'll probably be talking about at the retreat next week because I'm not in there with the students when they take the tests, but that's certainly something that we need to be looking at, especially in those higher grades where we're seeing some of those no growth, and that's where we need to ask those questions. Is it because they're not engaged?
Right.
Or they're checking out?
So, because they, they may believe that the test is just a test, and it doesn't mean anything, even though it does mean a lot.
Yes.
So, again, we need to do something to get the kids ready for, or students ready for, for tests. So that, I would say the prior scores would be better if they, if there was some effort put into that, you know, by both staff and students. So, on the, on the numbers and just the averages, fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, you know, go up and down, and seems where we have a lot of problems that there's no growth or very little growth. So, is there any kind of emphasis put on those grades in terms of this test and to improve those, those percentages?
So, I will say that when we do the initial testing in the fall, that gives us really great data to see where our students are, right? So, we take that data to then inform our teaching. So, if we have, for example, a fifth grade class, like you're mentioning, and we see that they're not at grade level, or there's certain particular holes in concepts that they've missed, that's where we do employ our tier-two and tier-three instruction, which is really targeted on those skills that individual students or groups of students would need. And so, though you might be seeing that in the fifth and sixth and seventh grade areas, those are things that our teachers start to do really from the fall. And some of those, we're reaping the, we're reaping the benefits of those, right, that you're not seeing those holes now. And so, that just tells us that those targeted interventions are working for students, but we have to really dig in, especially in the next couple of weeks and over the summer, to find out what is happening? Are there whole concepts? We've noticed in the past that, for example, our Go Math textbook, they may have the last chapter is geometry, for example. Well, if a teacher is not getting to the last chapter, and that's where we're seeing all of our, our students struggling with that standard, then we need to figure out how do we cycle that back in earlier in the school year? And so, that's really that high-level kind of, or that really granular analysis that we need to do to find out, is it standards? Is it at a school level? Are materials sufficient? What's happening?
And Leslie, maybe we should do, do you, what's this, what's this term we use here when we show things? Do you?
Did you know?
I'm sorry?
Did you know?
Did you know? That's what I was. Did you know? For parents and students, did you know that Ames Web does this? Did you know that this test is for this? Did you know? So, to get the parents, you know, kind of up to speed on the, on the test that their kids are going to probably get and, or take. Because I, I think we need that support from, from the home base, and also for students.
Yes.
I mean, because we, we agree that there are some students that maybe just don't, it's just a test or whatever. But did you know, and then what it means, you know, not only for them but for the district in that way? So, I'd like to see some of that done, you know.
Will do. Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you very much. Thank you. When I compare the growth of some schools and others, some like I am looking and read the proficiency summary, and I looked at Post Oak, 43% of 50. Then the rest is eight, 10, 19, 16, 20. My question, what is the idea, idea, the best score that we need to have for our, for our schools will be all in the 50, right? Then, how we had to do to bring our students to there?
To get, to reach the level of, of what we're seeing with Post Oak, is that what you're saying?
Because improvement over low level is not enough.
Sure.
We've had to improve in the high level.
That's right.
Every one of our students. Then even I'm very happy about the improvement. We are not what we're supposed to be, in my opinion.
Agreed. Yep.
Then, 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 yes, we had to celebrate that, no question about. But what we had to, what, what do you think? Or how are you supposed to present to the principals and everybody else for the next year to be everybody in the higher level of proficiency?
I think one of those things that we have to look at is what, what is successful? Where, where do we see those pockets of greatness? Whether it's in a school or whether it's in a classroom, and then replicate those strategies. I think we've seen this year that really being consistent with structured literacy program that we're now doing district-wide. For a long time in the school district, principals had autonomy to run their schools kind of with the ways that they thought were the best. And every principal, just like myself, we all have our own backgrounds, right? Whether it's science, social studies, whatever the vantage point might be. And it's really important that we share across a district and that we're using research-based things across the district with consistency. And because then everyone has, then we don't have an equity issue. Everyone, whether you go to Willow, or you go to Kavanaugh, or you go to Post Oak, you're all getting access to the same curriculum and the same pedagogy, right? And so, just like you said, we do see the outliers, right? We can look at this, these graphs, and we can see where they're happening. And so, what our division is doing is we're getting into those schools and speaking with those principals and speaking with those teachers to say, what is it you're doing? Our principals are in the classrooms doing the observations and walkthroughs, and we're taking notes to say, okay, we see, for example, I will highlight Kavanaugh, for example, we know that they're really using small groups as a strategy, and we're seeing huge success with that, especially in the area of math. So, that's something we need to make sure every teacher has access to, knows how to do. The art of a small group, it's really an art. And so, making sure that teachers have the tools in their toolbox to be able to execute those. We have greatness here in Lansing. We see it right here. It's just we need to make sure it's everywhere and that we celebrate that and, and keep going.
And I think the expectation of this board and the parents is just what you said. And we had to transfer that expectations to everybody that were from Lansing School District.
That's exactly right.
Then, then it's a challenge for us in the next year. We cannot for the pandemic, we cannot blame the pandemic anymore. Then, then, then I think it's an opportunity and a challenge.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions from board members? Dr. Kavanaugh?
I'm so sorry. So, is the plan moving forward for data collection to just compare the current year to the previous year? Or would it be possible to look at trajectories over time after a number of years?
I think anything that the board would like to see or we think is going to be positive or powerful to ours is what we will.
Okay, because I think Dr. Rodriguez brings up a really good point. So, what we've been talking about today and looking at in the graphs is change within schools, right? So, like the same school one year to the next. And what Dr. Rodriguez is talking about is change between schools. And once we have about four years of data, that's a multi-level model, so that's something we can calculate. So, I would like to request that, that we continue to track, not just comparing one year to the previous, but to be looking at patterns because that's how we can better understand what Dr. Rodriguez is interested in, is where are there areas of growth, not only within schools but between schools?
And we have been tracking that data really through M-Step. We've, we have our data all the way back to 2016, 17. And when I was at Sheridan Road, we even tracked our cohort. So, we would follow our fourth grade, then fourth graders, how did they do in fifth grade? How did they do in sixth grade? Because again, when we look at these graphs, these are not the same students, right? So, you have kindergarten to kindergarten, but those aren't the same kindergartners. So, you really do have to look over time. So, thank you for lifting that.
Really appreciate it when Dr. Kavanaugh asks the questions. We're all thinking.
Thank you for saying that.
Right, yeah. Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. I think we are working together in collaboration tonight, and that is. But it will be good, maybe in September, October, you present to us what kind of plans or strategic plans that you presented to all schools to see how we can change for the low level to the level that we are expecting. Then, we, we have in the strategic plan that our students to improve, but we cannot be happy just to improve a little bit.
We. We have to keep going.
Okay, but maybe, maybe a culture they influence, not only this school but the whole schools, and present a plan to all the principal to say, that is the expectation of the board education, the parents, then plan you had to do it. Because I think for a long time, we had to be happy with just in the level that we are. I think it's time now to move.
One thing I'll add to go down the road of data analysis. One thing that I'm really hoping to do probably next year when we have three years of data is to do some serious regression analysis so that we can not only look at scores and schools, but also looking at not only demographics but, you know, SES and things like that, where we can look at things that holding count, holding folks really accountable to how we're moving kids. One thing that this district has to really recognize, and Jessica's done a really wonderful job, is, you know, many of our schools serve lots of different students, and we have to be really thoughtful about which students we're serving at which schools. And so, if we can really look at other factors, it will help us see some real pockets of excellence and some places that we need to help. So, you know, I think we've got good data. I love your willingness to help because I think it would be a terrific thing. But, you know, we have these two years of data because the year before, of course, we didn't have any, and the year before was cut short with COVID. So, there was, I think, once we get a, a real strong amount of data, we'll be able to get some real in-depth, I think, analysis and then ways forward. But, you know, to, to Dr. Rodriguez's point, the, the plans that we have, which we should present, are going back to that kind of last page. Like, we are going to focus on tier-one instruction. We're going to focus on curriculum. We're going to focus on differentiation. We're going to focus on those things, and we're going to start to see that growth. And then, we have to hold ourselves accountable. Are we focusing on the plan? And are we seeing the outcomes going the way that we hope they go?
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Benavides, for the presentation this evening.
Thank you.
That brings us on to other business team necessary, which I'm going to invite Mr. Lang to the table because he's up for the next two items. And first up this evening is consideration for the board to approve the food service contract for 2023 and 2024.
Good evening. You know, sitting over there thinking all this great news that Jessica was sharing, and I was like, I get to follow up with food and taxes. But then I was like, hey, what do kids like more, testing or food? So, sorry, Jessica. So, for the food service contract, this is a renewal for next year. Just for a reminder for the board, at least once every five years, we have to do an RFP. MDE requires us to do an RFP to do a new food service contract. And then, you're eligible for up to four one-year contract renewals after that. And then you're eligible for up to four one-year contract renewals after that. This is our fourth year of this or our fourth renewal of the contract. So next year, probably we'll start late fall, winter, doing an RFP for a new five-year cycle. And then presenting that to the board at sometime in the late winter or spring, once we have that contract ready to be approved. But the food service, again, is just the renewal for next year. One thing I wanted to point out, just on the recommendation, you see, well, we started with a fund balance of in food service, about 3.8 million, just just under 3.8 million. The our auditors last year in November, when they presented the audit, they had mentioned that the food service fund balance was higher than what MDE allows, and we had to have a spend down plan for that because you can't have more than thirty-three percent. So just by what the federal waivers for the lunch program, they got dropped after going into this year. There were some natural spend downs, so the budget amendment that we submitted last week that was approved, probably spent about a million of that. And then we also have some plans with our, work with Jody Territut, our great food service director, who talked to us about some of the things that she wants to do for upgrading some areas in food service. And Christina, next week at the board facilities, will be bringing some recommendations to spend some of that, some additional funds down, and which then we hope to have to the board for approval next Thursday. And then we've also talked about with the, obviously, some of the bond to support the bond with the the the, some of the parts of the new cafeterias in at least Mount Hope when that gets to be rebuilt. So being able to stretch our bond dollars a little farther and spend some of the food service dollars. That's a pretty much for food service.
Thank you. I just had a question on the food service. What is it? The food service management company, contract renewal? Can you just explain to us again what that is?
This is just a one-year contract renewal for next year. So this, again, this is the fourth and final renewal for the current five-year cycle. You can do up to four renewals.
So we have the we have the contract renewal for Sodexo, but then we have an attachment that says something related to, um, I wonder if this is just, so this word document we have that has to be submitted to MDE, that's just, oh, that's just like when you give us the, like a a bid response, that's basically explaining what we're approving?
Yep.
Okay.
You're talking about the, like, those documents?
Not that document. It's got our logo on it. It's. It's this one.
Oh, the actual recommendation? Yeah, that's just our general.
Okay. That's what I just got myself a little bit confused about. Okay, sorry. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, seeing none, I have a motion.
Madam President, ooh, boy, that was loud. Madam President?
Ms. Moore.
I move that the Board of Education approve the food service contract for the 2023, 2024 as presented.
Seconded. It's been moved by Ms. Moore, supported by Ms. Williams. I'm gonna give it to her because she was a tie for Ms. Moore to move it. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Oh, no, that doesn't count. All right. Motion passes eight zero. Next, Mr. Ling, you want to explain what we're doing with our tax levies?
Sure. And this is just the annual board approval of what we will have for our tax levies for next year. So the most relevant document is the one that has kind of the grid like that that just shows, and there's three of them, because one is for the fall taxes, or excuse me, the summer taxes. One is for those that we tax in summer and fall or winter, and then winter only. Because we split them up between the townships and the cities is how we do that. So our operating mileage is going to be the same as it was this past year, fourteen point four four seven six percent or mils, seven, eight mils. Total debt levies will be four point one, still staying the same. And then sinking fund is also staying the same at two point nine five seven five.
And this is just our annual reminder that we are not increasing taxes. We have to pass a resolution in order to levy them. This is also the first year, I think, I've realized that we collect taxes in one, two, three, four, five, six, seven jurisdictions? That is just incredibly interesting. I don't think other districts have that problem.
Three counties, seven jurisdictions.
Yeah, three counties, seven jurisdictions. It's very important that we collect our money, folks. So anybody may have a motion? Moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Ms. Lilge, that the Board of Education. Thank you very much, Dr. Rodriguez. It's been moved by support, it's moved by Dr. Rodriguez, supported by Ms. Lilge. Are there any other questions or comments? Absolutely.
All right. Wonderful. Well, first of all, of course, thank you to Jody and the food services. We really appreciate that. John, we certainly appreciate you getting this through. The one thing I do want to highlight is the tax levies that we are approving or hopefully approving is that if you look, that's seventeen point four four seven eight. This is the headly concern that we have talked about, where we are supposed to be getting eighteen, but as we've talked about, we're not actually getting the full eighteen. So in the future, we might want to have a conversation about how we can get to a place where we can actually get the full amount of money that we need. So as you can see, it's a small differential. It's a point five, you know, five and change. But even that is something that would help the school district. So I just want to point out that piece of this because I think in the future, we'll have a kind of a more robust conversation about that.
Yeah, I didn't know when you wanted me to jump in with that. But you'll see two other documents that I, they're probably at the bottom of your board packet. It was mentioned last week about Ben kind of alluded to the heavily rollback. So one of the documents just explains, you know, what the headly amendment is or tax amendment is. So in nineteen seventy-eight, state passes that we cannot levy, we cannot increase our levies or the property taxes cannot increase more than the rate of inflation. So if that happens, we have to reduce our tax levies to match the inflation rate. So nineteen ninety-four, Propose A happened. They said the maximum you can do is eighteen mils for operating. As you can see on the one chart, I had already documented back to two thousand. That's the last we were at, eighteen mils. And then we had several years that were no changes. And then I kind of bolded the years that there were rollbacks. And then, of course, it also affects the sinking fund, does not affect the debt, because you have to levy to be able to pay off your debt. The next page or the other page then just shows since tax year 2011, how much we could have received versus how much we actually received in tax levies and revenues that year. So the first several years of that, hundred thousand, not, I mean, it's a lot of money for most people, but in the grand scheme of our budget, it wasn't a lot of money. But as you see, the last few years, as property tax values have increased quite considerably, great for selling your house if you want to do that. But this year, this past year, is just over nine hundred thousand that we didn't collect because of that. And, you know, if there's any sort of changes in state aid revenue or stuff like that, you know, where we lose property taxes, the state makes us whole on a different part of state aid, we don't get that whole part of the eighteen, so we also lose some in there too. But this is specifically on.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. Do we, I mean, the community pay eighteen mils or only seventeen point five? Where is the money?
Yeah, so, yeah, we can only levy that, yeah, seventeen point four. So the next year would be the same.
The community pay only seventeen point four?
Correct.
I don't want the money to be in some places.
So what some, and Ben was talking about that, some school districts do is they do, and if you recall, a couple of years ago, the Ingom I Steve brought their proposal to re restore their special ed levy. And so they could now re re levy, whatever you want to call it, up to what their maximum they can. So we could say we're, we want to have a restoration, heavily restoration vote for up to three mils. So that gives you some cushion. If it keeps on rolling back, you can still keep on levying more. So you don't just ask for what to match the eighteen is now. So and you can, I think you can do that also for sinking fund. It'll probably just be a separate vote, but we're obviously not losing as much in sinking fund as we are the operating taxes.
So the, an opportunity for us to continue to discuss would be whether or not we wanted to move forward with a heavily override.
In the future.
Vote in the future. Okay. This is very helpful. When the superintendent tried to explain this to me over the phone, I was not tracking as well as I was with the documents in front of me. So thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor to approve the tax levy resolution as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Wonderful. Motion passes eight zero. Thank you, Ms. Chilling. Next on the agenda this evening is to consider the purchase agreement for, it's called Mount Hope Church, but we know this is the church property in front of Gardner Middle School. If you guys make sure you don't have the panic attack that I did, that there's an amendment to the purchase, which amended the purchase price to the three twenty-five, which is what is actually the purchase price. I'm not sure of anything beyond that. Mr. Superintendent, you need to add?
No, just I am thrilled that we were able to get the press, the the price a little bit down, because I want to be a good shepherd of the money.
I appreciate it. The price is down and the asbestos report was clean. I will share with board members, I have asked, this allows us to purchase it, we'll own it, we'll get into it. There's a couple next things that we will need to do as far as make sure it's properly zoned and any retrofitting updates that we would need to do to bring it up to standards. So we don't know what that price tag will yet be. That does make me a little bit nervous. But any additional purchases or or expenses for this property will be brought to the board for consideration. And then just reminding the board, my colleagues, that we are using Fund Forty-Five for the purchase of this property. I pay attention sometimes, guys. All right. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Lopez.
Yeah. I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution, ratifying the Mount Hope Church purchase agreement as presented.
It's been moved by Mr. Lopez, supported by Dr. Body. Are there any additional questions or comments? Great. Given that this is the purchase of property, I may ask the clerk to call the roll.
Dr. Body? Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Ms. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez? Ms. Williams? Ms. Willis?
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item D, which is the receipt adoption and approval of the superintendent's evaluation. I am going to read a summary of the evaluation and note that a formal copy of the evaluation will be placed in the superintendent's personnel file of record. But this evening, we would like to present that the Lansing School District Board of Education met on Thursday, June first, for the purpose of evaluating Superintendent Ben Shuldiner. The evaluation covered the following six overall areas of competency: governance and board relations, community relations, staff relations, business and finance, instructional leadership, and progress toward district-wide goals. The superintendent was rated as highly effective in all six applicable categories with an overall score of ninety percent, which allows for the final rating of highly effective. Superintendent Shuldiner continues to excel as a leader within the Lansing School District, consistently propelling our educational institution towards excellence. He demonstrates transparency in addressing the challenges we face, showcasing exceptional leadership qualities such as effective communication, integrity, genuine compassion, and a commitment to fairness. His expertise and guidance consistently result in positive advancements for the district. The district's strong financial situation is recognized and appreciated, and Superintendent Shuldiner's proactive and creative approach to address addressing district issues is commendable. The board deeply appreciates the superintendent's dedicated efforts on behalf of the students, staff, and parents and the entire community. And as I mentioned, the full details of this evaluation and summary will be placed in the superintendent's personnel file, along with the minutes of the June eighth regular or twenty twenty-three, today's meeting, along with the minutes for tonight's meeting. So with that being said, there's an opportunity for us to put on a mo, a motion on the floor to adopt the evaluation.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Lopez?
I move that the Board of Education receive and adopt the twenty-two, twenty-three annual evaluation of Superintendent Shuldiner as presented.
It's been moved by Mr. Lopez, supported by Dr. Body. Are there any additional questions or comments for my colleagues? Seeing none? We think the summary speaks for itself. Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes eight zero. That brings brings us on to a consideration for non-renewals. We do have one, one member who is considered, has received a notice of intent for non-renewal and has requested to address the board in closed session, which is their right. But we are going to convene into closed session once I receive a vote, and then we will ask the member who requested to meet with us in closed session to stay as well. May I have a motion? Excellent. It's been moved by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Lilge, that the Board of Education recess into closed session for the above requested reasons. We are going to review a notice of intent for non-renewal for probationary, to probation of teachers. Okay, that's it. May I, any additional questions, comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Body? Dr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Ms. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez? Ms. Williams? Ms. Willis?
Yes. Motion passes eight zero, and at seven oh seven, we are in closed session.